Welcome to the October 7th regular meeting. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. The reflection will be provided by Mr. Johnson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Moton Elementary School. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Would everybody please stand? And may God join us in our deliberations and guide the outcomes to help the children and the students under our charge. And tonight, our thoughts and prayers go out to Mr. Motto and his family for their loss. And we'll have a second or two of silent reflection. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pender?
Thank you, Moton Elementary and Moton families for coming out to say the pledge tonight. You know, every time we do the pledge and we have students here, we invite them to lead the pledge. And when I turn around and I'm facing the flag and you have all the adults up here waiting for students to lead us in that pledge, and there's a bit of a pause, but they always take the lead and lead us. And I think that that's so important. And every time they do it, there's just that little pause, but then they go. So you guys did a great job. We appreciate you leading us in the pledge, and we appreciate all of you. You guys have a very large group from Moton coming here tonight. So thank you for showing your support and coming out. And Ms. Duval will pass around the mic, and you can introduce yourself, too. Thank you.
I'm Tucker Smith, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Piper Carrera, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Abel Ramirez, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Annabelle Cook, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Kenya Signer, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Violet Bragg, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Luke Cabbage, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Annalee Stacy, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Alana Compton, and I'm in the 5th grade.
I'm Haley Darum, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Nick Clifton, and I am in 5th grade.
I'm Kelsey LaRosa, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Amelie Marrero, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Sinai Turner, and I'm in 5th grade.
And a Chick-fil-A cow to your schools for you.
And a gift card, I think, for a meal, too, goes with the cow. So thanks to Chick-fil-A. Did you guys want a picture? No? You're good? Okay. Oh, you took a before.
Mrs. Martin? Patty Martin? Can you hear us?
Yeah, she's coming up.
Can you come to the podium, please?
You're getting ready to see is just a snippet of all of the amazing things that are happening at Moton Elementary.
Enter. I'm sorry. Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Patty Martin. I'm the principal of Moton Elementary. Sorry, I assumed you guys all knew. But this is just a snippet of all of the great things that are happening at Moton Elementary. You're going to see some of our clubs. There, you just see that we are learning about different jobs, not just firefighters and policemen, but all kinds of different jobs that are both available in Brooksville and outside of Brooksville as well. We just have a lot of amazing things happen there, and most of you guys have been there. But of course, you're always welcome to come and check us out. We're kind of like a little hidden gem back there. So you're welcome to come and see all the amazing things happen at Moton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Pender, community members, students, faculty, and staff. At this time, on behalf of the Hernando County School District, I would like to recognize the following Moton Elementary School employees for exemplary service with the district for more than 30 years. As I call your name, please receive your certificate and stay at the front for a group Robin Kidd, in recognition of 34 years. Jody Mills, in recognition of 34 years. Michelle Ross, in recognition of 34 years. Lisa Henderson, in recognition of 32 years.
Item number 1, 26-3351, the approval to adopt the revised agenda dated October 7th, 2025. Can I please have a motion? In a second. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Are there any elected officials in the room? Item number 2, 26-3345, recognition of Southwest Florida Water Management District employees.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Pender, community members, students, faculty, and staff. At this time, on behalf of the Hernando County School District, I would like to recognize the numerous employees of the Southwest Florida Water Management District who contributed their time, talent, and treasure through their donation of hundreds of new shoes to help the students at Brooksville Elementary School start the year off on the right foot. In attendance to present the certificate of appreciation is RJ Enman, the principal of Brooksville Elementary School. And here to receive the certificate of appreciation on behalf of the Southwest Florida Water Management District is Casey Cutman, a hydraulic data analyst for Southwest Florida Water Management District. If you all could come up front, please.
occurred. And it was an amazing, amazing event. And I so appreciate Southwest Florida Water Management for taking this project on. It's the employees of the organization who make this happen. And that, they take it on themselves, and they pick out a school every year to help the kids. And the number of shoes was just overwhelming. And it is so, it was great for our kids at Brooksville Elementary. So I want to thank SWF MUD very much for taking this on and helping Brooksville Elementary.
Sorry, the light wasn't on. Thank you, Mrs. Duval. Item number 3, 26-3352, approval of the minutes from the workshop and regular school board meeting of 9:23, 2025. Item number 4, 26-3334, public hearing and final approval of the Hernando County... Oh, sorry. Let her reset that. Okay. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you. Please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Item number 4, 26-3334, public hearing and final approval of the Hernando County School District's media handbook that received tentative approval at the September 9th, 2025 workshop. Do we have any white speaker forms for this item?
We do not.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? A second. Board member, any discussion? Please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. Item number 5, 26-3353, citizen input on agenda items. Are there any green speaker forms?
There are none.
Now, we're on the portion of the adoption of the consent agenda, and that is items number 6 through 24. Does anyone want to pull items from the consent? Okay. Mrs. Duval, go ahead.
I want to again recognize the new process we have for field trip forms for the district. And I do appreciate the willingness of the sponsors, coaches, administrators to continue to work with us as we refine this document and hopefully make it easier and easier for everyone to use. So I'm not pulling any field trips. Yay. But I do want to acknowledge, this transition is difficult, as with most change. But I do appreciate the hard work that's going into helping make this new form become a reality. That was it. Shannon?
Thank you, Mrs. Duval. And I would also like to thank you, Mrs. Duval, for spearheading that and taking that on. That's a lot of time and effort, and you went through everything, and you made sure that we had dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
I thank Kelly behind me, Kelly Pogue, Gina in the back, Lisa in the back. This was a concerted effort to try to make an improvement on how we handle business here. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cropley. Thank you, Mrs. Michaelika. And thank you to our secretary, Mrs. Pogue. Thank you for everything. Okay, can we please move on to number 20? We have a motion? We have a second? Okay, please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you. We're at the portion of the citizen input on general topics. This is number 25, 26-3354, citizen input on Hernando County school issues on which the school board customarily takes action. Are there any pink speaker forms?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, would you please read the instructions for this item?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for the public to address general matters not on the agenda this evening. Speakers should have completed a pink citizen input form. The opportunity to speak on topics not on the agenda. If you have any attachments you wish to share with the board, please provide them to the board secretary prior to speaking. Each speaker will have three minutes during this segment of the agenda. Speakers will be called to come forward by the chairman. Prior to making your remarks, please state your name and address for the record. Inquiries or comments made during citizen input may be followed up and reported to the board by the superintendent or staff thereafter.
Thank you for that. Our first speaker is Mrs. Kimberly Maruni.
Kimberly Maruni, Brooksville, Florida. Good evening, board members, board chair, Superintendent Pender. I know the change in the volunteer for field trips came from state law change. As staff can volunteer because they already have been through the extensive process to be hired, my idea and question and thoughts on this are what about law enforcement and military personnel? I know our school, for us to even go in for certain things, we have to be a Level 1 or Level 2. My oldest, who's in the military, doesn't really have, is able to do that process because he's in the military, but if he's able to come down for something for my daughter, he wouldn't have enough time to do that. So my questions and thought is if there could be within the law, because they've already been through the process. In fact, they go through drug testing, so it's even more extensive. If we could come up with maybe some ideas regarding law enforcement and military personnel when it comes to that whole volunteer and situation. Sorry. Next, I just want to say, teacher, staff, bus attendants, bus drivers in attendance, thank you for everything you do. Liam, my Liam has Mrs. Liberty and Mrs. Barrett this year, along with Mrs. Long as his ESD support. Gracie has Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Silver, and Mrs. Stutudo. And I'm sorry if I Gracie has Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Silver and Mrs. Stitudo, and I'm sorry if I pronounce your name wrong, as her E S D support teacher. I'm grateful to all six of them for their great communication we have had so far this year, for the good of my little man and Gracie girl. They are great teammates that my husband and I have to ensure our kiddos are thriving and growing how they should in their educational goals. We are a team and we work together in their education journey. I also want to talk about Mr. Lonnie Powell. He's an amazing driver. Like, he loves these kids like they're his own. He gets them to and from school safely each and every day. I can never say enough about him. This is our second year having him. And it's because of people like him that I can rest easy that my kids are going to and from school on a bus. So that's an amazing thing. Also, I don't know if every school's doing it. Leader in Me, Challenger, oh my God, Gracie loves it. It's an amazing thing that they're doing. She got to work with a kindergarten class and she loved it. It gives her confidence. It gives her, you know, feel like she's important, so to speak, and she absolutely loves it. For my last thirty seconds, on October thirtieth, the second graders are doing the biography museum again. So at two forty-five, please come out to Challenger and see that. These kids come up with some amazing things. I know Mrs. Duval has been. These kids are just phenomenal when it happens. So please come out and see what they come up with this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gracie Mulrooney.
Good afternoon. I cannot speak today. Good afternoon, Hernando School District. I'd like to talk about Leader in Me. Leader in Me is a new program that we started. I was picked for one of the Leader in Me because I was showing a Leader in Me. And a Leader in Me is where you're proactive, you're reactive. We learn all these new stuff and it's amazing. And Ms. Latinas is our teacher for Leader in Me. And I had her in third grade for my R T I teacher, so she's amazing. And I like to say the Leader in Me pledge real quick because I think it's actually really cool. Yeah, so it's called the Leader in Me pledge. I pledge today the habits I will use to become a strong leader and spread the good news. I'll be proactive. I'm in charge of me. Begin with the end in mind. Planning is a key. Put first thing first. I'll work then play. Think win-win every single day. I'll listen then speak so we can all be heard. It's how it works best. I understand the word. I will synergize because together is best. I will sharpen my saw to take care of the rest. Hear my voice. Listen to me. I'm gonna be the best leader I can be. And proactive, I meant, oh my God, what's that called? Synergize? It's like you're working together. That's how we learned it. And we, I feel like just Leader in Me is really cool because we get to do all these new things for trunk or treat. We can make these flower pens, like you take a flower, a fake flower, and then you put, you get a pen and then you wrap this like green tape around. And you get, and then after you tape it around, we put in the ready to go for the trunk or treat. So we can make monster slime, which is I did that, and a lot of stuff. So I think it's awesome. And then the next thing I want to talk about is Ms. Stitudo. She's amazing at the E S E thing. Okay. We learned new ways how to minus, subtract, timesing and using decimals. And I learned a lot from that and I got way better at math. So thanks for Ms. Bailey and Ms. Stitudo. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beverly Ko.
It's gonna be hard to beat that. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Pender and board members. Happy National Ban Book Week, which I know you all celebrate. Two things help us make sense of the world: information and stories. Both explain, describe and give language to the world we encounter. It is not a surprise then that banning books is a way of erasing stories, identities and peoples, and also reshaping understandings of the past. Now, in 2025, book censorship in the United States is rampant and common. Never before in the life of any living American have so many books been systematically removed from school libraries across the country. Never before have so many politicians sought to bully school leaders, media specialists and teachers into censoring according to the politicians' political and/or religious ideological preferences, even threatening public funding and the suspension, firing or even arrest of librarians and teachers. Never before have so many stories been stolen from so many students. In 2023, Governor DeSantis signed House Bill ten sixty-nine stating that if a parent or community member, just one person in a school district, objected to a book that they found obscene, the school had to remove that book immediately and indefinitely until a public hearing took place. It makes far more sense to me that that one parent just doesn't allow their child to read the book and not legislate other people's children. Majority rule used to be how democracy worked. This past August, Florida federal judge Carlos Mendoza ruled that parts of H B ten sixty-nine are unconstitutional and violate students' First Amendment right of free access to ideas. Of course, the state has filed an appeal, but I urge all free speech advocates to write and call your representatives. It can make a difference. This is about who controls information and access to knowledge. Some of the world's literary masterpieces are on the banned book list. Also, please remember that no great civilization banned books. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mrs. Teresa Hunley.
Hello. So mine's not as happy as everyone else's. My son goes to J D Floyd Elementary. I have been trying to get him a five oh four since last year. I have all the medical documentation where Ms. Goodwin denied it. They called me in for a meeting Friday to re-get it stating, you know, I wasn't doing my job as a parent, not having it for him, when they declined it last year. I have an open police case with J D Floyd where a teacher put their hands on my son in the beginning of the year and the principal stated my son lied because there was no evidence to it. I have now had P E, phone calls, voicemails every day of the week almost for my son being bullied at that school. The art teacher took a poll in class to see if he should go on the corner and let all the kids raise their hand if they thought he should. This is not okay. My son has now been talking about committing suicide at six years old. His psychiatrist actually is sending over documentation from our meetings because I've emailed all of you guys. I've attached all the attachments. I have done everything I possibly can. He has been out of school since Friday. He will never step back around on that school. I got escorted off the property Friday because they thought I was recording our meeting. If you weren't hiding something, why would it be a big deal that I was recording the meeting for my son's five oh four? I'm not okay with the things going on at J D Floyd. It keeps getting, nothing's being done about it. I have everything. I have emailed you guys, notes home in his planner from where he's getting wrote up daily for his A D H D symptoms, moving, moving too much in P E. How do you get wrote up for moving too much in P E? It's physical activity. He's getting wrote up in art class, during the teacher, during his science, everything. He has severe A D H D. He is on medication. They have known this since last year. But last year, he was getting special circumstances from his Donahue, so they declined his five oh four. Now this year, they want him to have it and an I E P. Well, I told them this last year when they declined it, what was gonna happen next year. And now we're to this point. They wanted to fail him last year and now he's been out of school since Friday because we're zoned for Moton and I live off a county line and he will never go to Moton. So at this point, I have no idea where to send my son to school and I'm having so many problems with J D Floyd and nothing's being done about it. I have multiple voicemails. I have my phone call logs. I have emails. I have everything proving that I have been trying to get his five oh four since 2024 and nothing has been done about it. His psychiatrist is actually going to put in a formal complaint for them going against her medical advice last year, wanting to know where they got their child psychology degree from because it's not okay that he's struggling this bad and I've already tried doing everything on my part to get him help and nothing's being done. So now he's out of school, can't go back to J D Floyd over the teachers and stuff. I got escorted off because I thought I was recording. What am I supposed to do now with my son? He is severely A D H D. I've tried getting his five oh four and I E P. I talked to Patricia today. She's helping me get it. But he has no school to go to. My little sister and my niece went to Moton. Horrible time there. I know they have a new principal, but I'm not willing to take that chance again. And that's what we're zoned for. I had school choice is why I got J D Floyd. And then it's been nothing but problems. Nothing's being done about it. The principal pretty much told me straight up my son was a liar. The teacher has no reason to lie. My six-year-old does for hitting him. My six-year-old don't know she loses her job and career. He just thinks he's getting spanked again.
Thank you. Mrs. Hunley, are you able to, Mrs. Hunley, hold on, please. Just one second. Just push your light and I'll let you talk. Are you able to transport or does he have to ride a bus?
No, I transported Dr. Forsen to school.
Okay. Would you do me a favor and would you walk back to Mrs. Michaelika and leave your phone number?
Also, your email went to everyone's junk mail. We found it. I found mine today.
I marked it urgent, so I didn't know that because I didn't have the urgent.
I never received it.
And it will go in your junk.
Okay, well apologies that it looked to you as if no one responded because that is not, nothing like any of us up here. We would, yeah.
On Sunday.
So do you want me to talk, Shannon?
I do. Okay. What we're gonna do is if you'll leave your phone number back there with Mrs. Michaelika and then we'll reach out to you. And also, yes, I'll let you talk. And then, once again, apologies for appearing as if none of us answered you. Nobody received that email. And I'm sorry for your son that any of this is happening. Mrs. Bonzick would like to say something?
Mrs. Hunley, I received your email on accident through junk. I did for it. Ms. Cropley in the back has been working on it all day to help fix the situation. Nobody was aware of what was going on.
No, I know that. This is the first time coming in. I sent the email Friday to let you guys know because I just didn't know what to do.
It's in your junk folder. I know. So go back and talk to Ms. Cropley in the back. She has been working all day to rectify the situation with our E S D department. Thank you.
And everyone will be reaching out to you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Brianna Johns.
Hi, my name is Brianna Johns. I like to talk about some teachers. All teachers are thankful for the students they got. And when they're happily, when they get their students, they always are happy and they like teach them about the stuff they learned in college, high school and middle school. And they are just so happy for the students they got. And I really want them to have a really good evening. And I am, and I'm glad for my friends, my family and all the people that in the world. And I'm just so happy for everyone in the world.
Thank you.
Brianna goes to Brooksville Elementary.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any closing comments?
Yeah, if I could, I just wanted to comment or give you an update. One of the speakers talked about textbook bans and the fact that they may be unconstitutional. Well, there's actually a court case and she sort of referred to it. And it's not really so much about whether school districts can ban textbooks. It's the process that's being used. So that's really what's being litigated. And it's winding its way through the court system. Who knows when there'll be a decision? But there is something out there about the whole process.
Thank you, Counsel. And to touch on that, the books that Hernando County has removed, they are pornographic in nature and they're not appropriate for any student. So as long as I've sat on this board, any book that has come out of our school system needed to come out of our school system. And if any of those books, right now, we do not have a book problem. I think that's been rectified. So I think we're in good standing. But if in the future, anything was to come back into our schools and somehow make it sway into the brick and mortar building, it will not stay there. So once again, I absolutely will, as long as I'm sitting on this dais, I will not allow any of the pornographic material to get in the hands of our Hernando County students. Thank you. Okay, board members, who would like to go first? Mrs. Bonzick?
So first, I'd like to congratulate Ray on becoming a certified superintendent. Good job. Mr. Pender? And then, it's gonna be a little lengthy, but. So October is Disability Awareness and Inclusion Month. So exceptional student, education is a service, it's not a place. There are approximately three thousand six hundred to four thousand eight hundred students with disabilities in Hernando County School District. The national average for students with disability in public schools is between fifteen to twenty percent. Not all disabilities are the same and not all disabilities are visible. There is a wide range of disabilities our students may experience. These can include intellectual and developmental disabilities such as Down Syndrome, neurodevelopmental differences like autism spectrum disorder and medical conditions classified as other health impairments, including but not limited to epilepsy, A D H D and chronic illnesses. Some disabilities may be immediately noticeable while others may not be visible at all, regardless of the visibility, every child deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. When students with disabilities enter our schools, they should become welcomed, supported and included, just like their non-disabled peers. This means access to quality instruction, opportunities for meaningful participation and environments that reflect understanding without judgment. Creating an inclusive school is not just a legal responsibility, it's a moral one. It's about recognizing that including students with disabilities strengthens the entire school community. Let us continue to work and build a school culture where all students, regardless of the ability, feel valued, empowered and succeeded. Thank you. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonzick. Mister, Miss, Miss who? Mrs. Hawkins?
Sure. I just want to say, I want to close by reminding everyone while we're here, we're here for our students. Every decision we make, every discussion here, comes back to what's best for them. I'm proud of the dedication I see from our staff, our families and the community. Thank you, everyone, that takes the opportunity to come and speak. Thank you, Gracie, and thank you, Brianna, for coming up to speak. I definitely see the Leader in Me program working and appreciate you doing the pledge for us. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Hawkins.
I wanted to wish my wife a happy birthday. She put up with me for another year. And on a more serious note, our hearts do go out for the family of Joe Amato for the loss of his mother. And everybody, please drive safely, get home and come back next time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Pender?
So to our students, whether you're saying the pledge or speaking up here, it is important. It's an important part of what you do as a student, the other part besides the math and the science. So thank you for doing that. I think we've seen Gracie here for a long, like, when smaller than Brianna. And her speaking ability and coming up here in comfort speaking has improved tremendously. So congratulations on that, Brianna. We appreciate you saying those things about our teachers and our staff and we appreciate them too. Speaking of the board, on the next meeting, we will have our student rep on the twenty-first. Our student rep will be back on the board. Those elections are happening this week, next week? Next week, so they'll be here at the next board meeting. Just wanted to give people, let you guys know about that. So thank you. I appreciate getting out, visiting schools. Last week, it was fun to get out. And I was at Pine Grove. And as we were walking through, Ms. Savarid said to me, there is a student here that's wearing a suit and he wears a suit every day. And I said, well, I think that he and I are probably the only two people in a suit at Pine Grove right now. So I got a picture of him at Acus and posted, and just little things like that. It's when, you know, Ms. Hawkins said the reason we're here is for the students. It just, those are the things that we need to be reminded of every day, whether we're on the board or we're, if you're in a classroom, you don't have to be reminded it's about the students as much. But if you're superintendent, administrator, sitting on the board, we need to be reminded all the time that it is about students and keep our focus there. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pender. And I myself, I'm not just sitting up here as a school board member, but I'm also sitting up here as a parent of three that's in our school system. So I have the honor and the privilege to be able to witness our schools at hand and how they are working and how effective they are. My children attend Whining Waters. I have two there and I have another student at Wikiwachi High School. Mrs. Torme and Mr. LaRose are the leaders there. They're the principals of both schools. And I just can't say enough, under their guidance and how they run their school, once again, I've always said it's like a small community and it really truly is. It's a lot for the administration to have to handle and they make it look so easy.
to have to handle. And they make it look so easy, and they do it with such class. So I'm very fortunate to be able to have my kids in schools that they get the good care and they get the classes, and they get put in the places that they need to be in order for them to thrive. For an example, back when I was in school, guidance counselors, you know, they would call us in and stay on top of everything we were doing, what classes we took, where we were, what our GPA was, what we were trying to ascertain, where we were going, if we were on the mark, if we were missing something. And I think today, I would assume that, you know, that's happening, and why I can say that I feel like it's still traditional. I am about tradition, and I love the old school values. But right now, we have a guidance counselor for my sophomore student, and his name is Mr. Richter. And he's a guidance counselor at Wikiwachi High School. And I cannot tell you how pleased I am. Bella sees him several times a week, and they are on track with her GPA. They're on track with her classes. She has given him information of what her aspirations are and the direction that he's given her in order to reach those goals. It has been profound. So I personally have not went over and seen him, but every day I get updates from my daughter of how things are going and what her and him have discussed. And I just can't even believe that, you know, through all the students that they have, because I do get to see the caseload, and I know it's a lot, and it's overwhelming. And just that one-on-one attention that he gives these students, for her to feel like she's the only one, and the way that he makes time for her, and that he has this open dialogue and this communication, it's just unreal. So I do have to go by there, and I do want to greet him and tell him thank you so very much for doing such an outstanding job. And then the other thing is, I had called Mr. Pender, and I had expressed that the PA system at Hernando High School was terrible, that you could barely hear, and it was muffled, and it needed to happen, and hopefully before homecoming. And he did it. So we have, during this homecoming week that just passed, the new PA system was at Hernando High School, and it sounded amazing. So thank you, Mr. Pender, for hearing us and for taking action on it.
No pun intended that I heard you right. It's PA system. It's in the stadium. Nature Coast is also going to get there in the process of adding the, a new PA system in their stadium, too. But thank you. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. And this morning, when I was driving my oldest to the high school, it was unfortunate that a car caught on fire at Wikiwachi High School. But the team at Wikiwachi and Wining Waters, once again, it's a shared campus, and being over there together, everyone seems to jump on board whenever there's something going on. And once again, they did that. They did a great job helping out with the traffic. They were moving everybody, getting them out of the smoke area so they didn't have to inhale any of the fumes. And they were keeping everyone safe this morning when that car was on fire. And luckily, they had just dropped their children off, and they were able to get out, and the whole car was engulfed in flames. So that was this morning. But I saw everybody jump into action, and everyone was helping each other. So I thought that was wonderful. And then once again, our chaplain program, we have rolled that out, and we're gonna continue to do so. And we have another pastor that has signed up on that list. And once again, it is completely voluntary. It is a list that's at the schools, and it is there for any parent who would just like an added layer of support. It's just something that a parent can utilize, and they can reach out if they need somebody to help them, and they can sit there with some, with another adult individual who is vetted and fingerprinted and has all their credentials, and they can sit with them if they need that extra support with their child. So that's there just as an option. But we are gonna be the first county in the state of Florida to roll that out, and that is all sanctioned. It's got statutes. We are policy and procedure. Everything is the right way. And I'm very excited just for the mental health aspect, to give our kids just something else to be able to utilize if the parents see fit. So it's optional. Some parents will never, ever even use it, but it's there. So I think that's nice. And I thank you, board, for going along with that. And it's very nice, because once again, we'll be the first county in the state of Florida that we have just implemented that. And other than that, I just want to thank each and every one of you for coming out and supporting Hernando County School District. It means a lot. You have a lot of things you could be doing tonight with your time opposed to sitting here. So all of your voices, whether we agree or disagree, that is what is the beauty of us being in the United States of America, is we can all have difference of opinions. And we love to hear from each and every one of you. I hope you guys have a wonderful night, and we'll be back here in two weeks. We hope to see you then, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you. And this meeting is adjourned at 6:45.